Jessica Graham.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, March 4, 2024. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Today we are joined by ASL interpreters Dario Garcia and Tamara Gastalum. Today we will receive the Pledge of Allegiance by Andrea Cabrera.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and for all. Honor the Texas pledge. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And now we will receive an invocation by Chaplain David Mayfield for the El Paso County Sheriff's Office and El Paso Police Department.
Thank you, Chaplain, for being here. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come before this body and pray for you and for the community.
Thank you.
And now, if you would, let us pray. Creator God, as we gather here today to conduct the business of this Commissioners Court, we humbly seek your guidance and wisdom. We recognize the importance of the decisions we make and the impact they have on the lives of the people we serve. Grant us the strength to act with integrity and fairness, keeping in mind the well-being of our community. May our discussions be thoughtful, our decisions be just, and our actions be guided by a commitment to justice and the common good. We ask for your blessings upon each member of this court, endowing them with courage to make difficult choices and the compassion to understand the needs of those they represent. In this shared pursuit of the greater good, may our differences be a source of strength, fostering collaboration and understanding among us. May our work today contribute to the betterment of our community and the lives of its residents. As we embark on the tasks before us, let us be mindful of the trust placed in us by the people we serve. May our efforts be a testament to our dedication to justice, fairness, and the well-being of all. We pray all of this in the name of what we find most holy. Amen.
Thank you. It's very special to have you here. Thank you.
Judge, do you have any opening comments you'd like to make before we begin?
Just want to welcome all of you to Commissioners Court. We've got Commissioner Stout online and on behalf of myself and the Commissioners, we welcome you here to Commissioners Court. Just, I'm so excited about the fact that this is sort of like validating, today is validating that we're the Veterans Capitol of the United States of America because we have the military, the veterans, and all the advocates like myself and others that we advocate to be this veteran-ready community. And I'll quote always, make sure I mention Carl, being the, that every day is Veterans Day here in the United States and here in El Paso. So thank you for being here. We truly appreciate your participation in government and everything that we need to do. More than anything, this opportunity to let Ford Bliss know how important they are and how appreciative we are. I know General Eisenhower can't be here today, but he has been such an advocate for this relationship between the community and Ford Bliss. It's just been amazing to have him support us in that way. He was our first, really, to propel being the Veterans Capitol of USA when we had the first opportunity to come out in November of, two years ago now, and claim Veterans Capitol of the United States of America. And so really appreciate this relationship between Ford Bliss and ourselves. So once again, we welcome you, wishing you a great Monday and just an absolutely awesome week. Thank you.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda composed of items 4A through 4W. Are there any items members of the Court or public would like to pull for discussion?
Commissioner Leon?
Judge?
Okay, Commissioner Leon, Commissioner Stout, and I think Commissioner Olguin.
No, I did not.
No? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Judge. I'd like to pull 4I and 4O and 4S.
And I'd like, I'd like 4K, please.
Did you?
Judge, I just want to make a comment, but I don't request any poll.
Okay.
And I just, on item 4B, I just want to, you know, be appreciative. I know Commissioner Olguin had some questions last year about the project Arriba, about them sending candidates to, in between UMC, and I'm glad that there is that interchange between them. We've checked on that, and so I'm really happy that Project Arriba is doing that with our hospital. And then just item J, I want to thank Administration for getting this project going on the culvert over in Westway for Stormwater. So a lot of issues, we need to work on water and stormwater issues, and I'm very thankful to Administration to get that going through. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
All I have, Judge.
With those exceptions, I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, Resolutions, 5A, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing March 3 through 9, 2024, as School Social Work Week in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. Appreciate that. You know, it's really an honor to present this resolution. I know when I was on the school board in Canatío for years, for many years, we fought the state to get us money for actual social workers and actual counseling to be going on in the school districts. And finally, over the last three, four years, we finally were able to get some social workers into the school district that the state gave us funds for. We're still not quite there with the need, but at least we have a start to make sure that we have these social workers in our schools. So, and I'll go ahead and present the resolution to the Court at this time, fellow Commissioners, Judge. Whereas the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965 and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act recognize the importance of social work programs through their inclusion in schools. And whereas school social workers are exceptionally skilled in providing services to students who face serious challenges to school success, including disability, poverty, discrimination, abuse, neglect, mental illness, homelessness, bullying, familial stressors, and other barriers to learning. And whereas school social workers are needed now more than any time in recent memory as more students are struggling with mental and behavioral health disorders, with nearly one in six children from two to eight years old, that's 17.4% having a diagnosed mental, behavioral, or developmental disorder. School-based mental health programs are critical to early identification of and early intervention for mental health problems and in the provision of appropriate services when needed. Whereas individuals who wish to access community mental health services often find such services unavailable, inaccessible, or inadequate, fewer than one in five children in need of mental health service receive them. Research indicates school mental health programs improve educational outcomes by decreasing absences, dropout rates, and discipline referrals while improving academic achievement. And whereas as licensed mental health professionals in United States schools, social workers provide necessary assessment, interventions, counseling, family outreach, and community referrals. School social workers likewise contribute to school safety planning by maintaining knowledge of school culture and climate. Whereas school social workers serve as vital, as vital members of a school education team, playing a central role in creating partnerships between the home, school, and community to ensure student academic success. So now therefore be resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court support the designation of March 3, 2024, through March 9, 2024, as School Social Work Week to highlight the crucial role school social workers play in the lives of El Paso Independent School District students and students across El Paso County. Sign this fourth day of March, 2024.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. On behalf of EPISD, I am Laura Gonzalez, and I am the Lead Family Intervention Specialist Social Worker for the District for the last 22 years. And I will say that what Mr. Coronado said is true in the last years, you know, EPISD, we've been very fortunate to expand the program. And as of this year, we hired 40 more social, it's going to be a total of 48 social workers. So we're going to have them at almost all the campuses, and we're very blessed because the mental health component and the social outreach to the communities is very important to our families. So thank you very much, and I would like to also thank all my team and the social workers for the district for being here on their spring break and for supporting our, for being very supportive. So thank you so much for this acknowledgement. We really appreciate it.
Well, as we make our final comments, if you could come up, all of you, introduce yourself. At least it's not as early as going to school, guys, all right?
I am Kimberly Meriweather, social worker at Richardson Middle and Nixon Elementary.
Welcome.
Hi, Maryam Enriquez. I'm at Tapui High School.
Thank you.
I'm Destiny Mora, Licensed Master Social Worker, and I'm at Austin High School.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Luchuga, and I am at Moy Elementary.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Adriana Lopez. I'm at Tinajero.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Becky Gonzalez, Licensed Master Social Worker at McGuffin Middle and Sunrise Mountain Elementary.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, good morning. My name is Christina Magdaleno. I'm a master level social worker, and I'm at
at Crockett and Bliss Elementary.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, I'm Victoria Morales, Family Intervention Specialist at Mylum and Zacquae Elementarys.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Yaren Garcia, Family Intervention Specialist at Polk and Guerrero Elementary.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Roxana Romero, I'm at Jefferson High School, Licensed Master Social Worker. Thank you.
Morning, I'm Raquel Herrera at Urban High School.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jessica Morales, and I'm at Colin Powell Elementary School.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Alexandra Polanco, I'm a Master Social Worker at Herrera Elementary.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Brenda Ramirez, I'm a Master Level Social Worker at Don Haskins Pre-K 2-8.
Thank you.
Good morning, Berenice Castillo, I'm at Barronne Elementary.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Bianca Castrejana, Licensed Master Social Worker with Bobby Joe Hill.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning, my name is Jamie Rivera, and I am at Canyon Hills Middle School.
Thank you.
Good morning, thank you for this opportunity, I'm Olivia Nadevice, and I'm a social worker in homeless liaison.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Roberto Ara, and I am the Districtwide Social Worker for EPISD.
Thank you. You know, I personally want to thank you, as most of them might know, is that my background was in mental health, started my career as a probation officer, worked in mental health, and, you know, just, I just feel so strong about the idea that the pandemic, you know, our children were probably, we don't recognize that. I know health-wise, it looks like our elderly were hurt quite a bit by the pandemic, but socially and development, you know, they went through a very difficult time. You know, the individuals in schools, those that were very young, that were trying to socialize or be able to learn to socialize, and then the high schools that were impacted, some of them not completing schools. And so, we have a challenge in our schools. And, you know, I've talked to Dr. Sayavedra, and obviously she is so engaged in mental health and wants, you know, mental health to be a big component. We focus a lot on the health side, you know, I think we get like by mandatory 45 minutes for the health side, but very little amount of time is spent on the emotional component. And so, I'm very proud of the fact, thank you Commissioner Coronado, because this is such a huge component of us continuing to take. I truly feel that we have a mental health pandemic in our community, probably not as much as other communities throughout the country, because we've been doing so much about that. But this is a huge challenge, and I thank you for your work, and I thank you for sort of recognizing the importance of the emotional component in our children. So, you do great work, and you're going to, it's very rewarding to know that we need to be a little bit more assertive in trying to help, you know, get mental health being part of our community. So, once again, I'll take it back to Commissioner Coronado.
Thank you, Judge. You know, one of the things that we struggle with this issue, and for many years, we've struggled with getting more funds from the federal government that they've committed since 30, 40 years ago, that they committed to providing 45% students that have disabilities, the idea, which is the Education Act for individuals with disabilities, our students. And many of our educators and school board members that are members of the National School Board Association, for many years, we've advocated to make sure that the federal government steps up to the plate, to their commitment. And we've been doing this for many years, and thankfully, about a year or two ago, we were able to secure an additional $5 billion for individuals with disabilities for the Education Act for these students. Throughout the country, the federal government's portion, when they're committed to 45%, had been only somewhere between 14 and 18% countrywide. And so, that increased by about another 5%. So, we're still, they're still kind of short, we're going to keep plugging away, and hopefully with help. And now that we have more social workers on board, we're able to make sure that we take care of these, of our students that have these issues. So, thank you all very much for the work you do, and I'm glad to see a lot of you here now in our school districts doing this work. So, thank you all very much. Commissioners and Judge, thank you very much for letting me present this resolution to the Court.
Thank you.
And if y'all come up, I know we have a signed resolution for you. Commissioners, we will give it to you, we'll take a picture, but Commissioner Stout, when he returns, we'll get him to sign it, and then give you the original, all right? Come on up, everybody.
You're helping. They still do a lot of that work. They open up their topics to their teachers. So, now, now that it's time for the elderly. How come maybe it feels so? Your mother's a woman. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask if you could scoot a little? Yes. Right there. I was looking at you. Smiles, one, two, three. Hold those smiles two more times.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm over here because I have a little bit of a cough.
See? Oh. So, you got the cooties.
Item 5B, postpone February 26, 2024, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing Border Heritage Magazine for its dedication to the community of El Paso County, Texas. Could we postpone this item for one week?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 5C, approve and adopt a resolution honoring and celebrating women in law enforcement during the El Paso International Women's Day Law Enforcement Honorary Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you. You want to come up? Pretty amazing how we have military, we have law enforcement, and we have veterans all at one time, so very special day today. So, I'll read the, whereas the second annual El Paso International Women's Day event will be held on March 8th, 2024, to honor and celebrate remarkable women in law enforcement who have selfishly, selflessly made significant contributions to our border community and serve as role models for our young women interested in law enforcement career. Whereas these women embody courage, resilience, leadership, and pride, demonstrating an unwavering commitment to keeping our community safe. And whereas despite progress, a gender gap persists in law enforcement, only 12% of sworn officers nationwide are women, and all the leadership level, less than 3% of police chiefs and agents in charge in local agencies are women. And whereas the Santana Gaskin Foundation LLC, which is inclusive of the call Me Able Foundation, acknowledges and appreciates women in law enforcement for their dedication in areas such as empowerment, leadership, mentorship, philanthropy, and volunteerism. And where since its inception in 2023, the Santana Gaskin Foundation LLC remains steadfast in honoring and acknowledging profound impact of women in law enforcement within the county of El Paso, Texas. Whereas the Santana Gaskin Foundation LLC champions diversity and inclusion, celebrating the social, cultural, political achievement of women in law enforcement. Whereas we commend the exceptional contributions of the following women in law enforcement, FBI EAD Arlene Gayler, DEA SAC Towanda R. Thorne James, El Paso Police Department Detective Laura Porter, the University of Texas El Paso Police Department Lieutenant Allison Vias, U.S. Customs and Border Protection Agent Alondra Contreras, El Paso Fire Department Fire Suppression Technician Jacqueline Manriquez, El Paso County Sheriff's Office Detention Bureau Sergeant Heather Martinez, FBI Special Agent Pio Janet Harper, and ICE ERO Veronica Molinar. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court declare March 8th, 2024, as El Paso International Women's Law Enforcement Honorary Day. Sign this fourth day of March, 2024.
Second.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
And Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge Samaniego, thank you so much. We took your challenge last year, you attended, and we had 100 people, remember, celebrate our luncheon. This year, we moved it to the El Paso Community College, and we expect more. So, do you want to say a little bit, because you were a big part of our luncheon celebration?
Well, yeah, it's so important, as the resolution read, about women in law enforcement and being able to honor them. Matter of fact, Chief Chavez was one of the honorees, and I got to see her last week there at, in Brownsville. But it also encourages tremendously, because there's a lot of young women that look forward to careers and don't realize, simply because it hasn't been focused to women, that they might leave themselves out of that possibility. And so, thank you for that encouragement. You do so much. I mean, besides everything you do, you do so much also in the area of veterans, and so we thank you tremendously. But it's a great opportunity for young women to start looking at that career. It's a very rewarding career, and hopefully we'll hear from you as well, so that you can continue to encourage them. So, thank you.
So, our Woman of the Year this year is the highest-ranking Latina in the FBI, and she's coming in from Washington, DC.
Oh, exciting.
So, can't wait. She's inspiring, and I just want to recognize the women that are here and let them speak.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Heather Martinez, I'm currently a detention sergeant with the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, and I've been there for about 10 years now.
Okay, we're a little biased about you, because of being part of the county and the sheriff, so thank you.
Good morning, my name is Jacqueline Manriquez, I'm a fire suppression technician for the City of El Paso Fire Department. I've been there for about 12 years. I want to thank God, and I want to thank you guys for giving us your time. And I, it's an honor to be representing the City of El Paso Fire Department. I feel like our younger generation really needs more role models. I feel like we're battling and we're competing against social media and a lot of worldly things, so I believe that more than just an award, I feel like this is a bigger responsibility for us to lead the younger generation. Thank you, guys, and God bless you.
Thank you. And thank you for the great partnership between the city and the county, especially when we have emergencies, and as you know, during the pandemic and even through the immigration situation, we have a great partnership, so thank you for that.
Good morning, my name is Veronica Molina, I'm actually the Supervisor Detention Departation Officer for Enforcement Removal Operations. I've been in the federal service for 21 years, in combination with Fort Bliss as well. And I just want to thank you for this award and for selecting me. And also, I wish more women would partake in law enforcement. It is a big barrier for women to be part of this, because it's a man's world, and, you know, and I wanted to continue having that mentorship and leadership for those women that are coming in for any type of law enforcement career. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Detective Laura Porter, I've been with the El Paso Police Department for 19 years. The last 13, I've been with the Crimes Against Children Unit, and I do really genuinely want to thank you guys, because I do see so much value in having women in these fields, and these kinds of things really do encourage that, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, you know, I encourage, sometimes we think that only women should encourage women, but I think men that are in law enforcement should also find the time for the mentoring. I was very fortunate, when I was a probation officer, indirectly, yeah, I didn't realize until she told me that I had helped her and mentored her, Lydia St. John, and she went all the way up to through the border patrol, all the way to being a special agent in Paris. And so, from a very young age, she was involved, and then she realized that it was an important career. So, I think all of us should nurture, encourage women being successful in law enforcement. I know that we make every effort here in the county to recognize women as very special, as you could see, these incredible women here that we have. So, thank you very much, and really appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, of course, how can I go without the chief talking about law enforcement? Thank you, Commissioner Leon.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners, and everybody out there. Number one, I am incredibly proud of all of you being here, and I've got to tell you back, 25 years ago, we had about 9% females within the El Paso Police. It is so hard to recruit, even harder now with what you see in the media, and nationwide, you're talking about 12%. So, hopefully, one day, we will see 50% participation, and I think it's a matter of time as we move forward, as all these agencies become so much more professionalized, and especially our local law enforcement. There's a reason why El Paso has continuously been one of the safest cities in the country, or really on earth, because of the work that you all do and our type of community that we have. So, congratulations, and thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Item 5D, approve and adopt a resolution honoring General Edward Greer on his 100th birthday in El Paso County, Texas.
Thank you. As you will see, and I'm glad sometimes after a resolution, individuals leave.
His exemplary and heroic service during this period was recognized by Award of the Silver Star and Bronze Star medals. Whereas a series of important assignments following the Korean War gave every indication that the Army had identified General Greer as a rising star in the Officer Corps. He was rapidly promoted to Captain. After advanced schooling in 1955, he was selected for assignment at the Department of the Army General Staff of Washington, DC. Three years later, he was selected for accelerated promotion to the grade of Major Important Military Schooling Followed as a Command and General Staff College at Fort Leavenworth, Kansas. After graduation, he served a year at Fort Lewis, Washington, as a second-in-command of a combined Rocket and Hoster Battalion, further preparing him for higher-level command. Whereas the next three years, General Greer again served in the Army General Staff in Washington as Personnel Planner and Manager of Assignment for Artillery Officers. He was promoted to Lieutenant Colonel in January of 1963 and 64. He returned to Korea, where he first served as an Artillery Operations Officer in a major headquarters, and subsequently was assigned to the most coveted position available for a Lieutenant Colonel, the Command of Battalion. And whereas in 1965, General Greer was again assigned to the Command and General Staff College, this time as an Author-Instructor. His normal tour was interrupted, however, by selection for the highest military schooling available in the Army, the National War College. While a student at the National War College, General Greer also earned his master's degree from George Washington University. He then returned to Washington as an Operations Officer in the Office of Joint Chiefs of Staff. During his assignment, he was promoted to Colonel. Whereas in April of 1970, General Greer was assigned to Vietnam, where he served initially as a Deputy Commander of the Artillery assigned to the U.S. Army XX, 20, I'm sorry, 24 Corps. Further acknowledging of the special trial and confidence placed in General Greer by the Army came when he was selected to command an entire artillery group. He was honored for his service in the war by awards, including the Legion of Merit and the Vietnamese Cross of Gallantry and Gold Star. Whereas combat service in his third war ended in March of 1971, when he was reassigned to the Office of the Assistant Secretary of Defense. During this assignment, he was selected by promotion of Brigadier General. He then moved to Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri, where he became the Deputy Commanding General in 1974. General Greer was reassigned to Washington, DC area as the Deputy Commanding General of the U.S. Army Military Personnel Center. Less than a year later, his rapid rise continued when he received the Second Star of Major General. Whereas in November 1st, 1976, General Greer requested that he be placed at his U.S. Army Retired List. His request was granted, and on November 30th, 1976, one of the Army's most distinguished soldiers retired with honor. Added to this, many citations for valor on the battlefield and meritorious achievement in peacetime, General Greer was awarded the Distinguished Service Medal, this nation's highest military award for service by the President of the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners Court recognize and honor the service of General Greer, who has demonstrated exemplary service to our country and our community, and has acted as a pillar of support for their families and friends. General Greer is an inspiration of those who currently bear the burden of defending our nation. Signed this fourth day of March, 2024.
Second. Second.
Commissioner O'Gee?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is that amazing, or what? Thank you. Both Commissioner Stout and myself co-sponsored this recognition, so we're very proud of this. Just a second.
Well, good morning, Judge. It's a pleasure to be here and to participate in these activities. Little did I ever recognize when I made the move from Washington to El Paso, that I'd wind up in a tremendous honor and a situation like this this morning. So it really brings joy to an old soldier's heart to be here and so recognized, and I just appreciate all your activities, and I just wish you Godspeed.
Thank you very much. One of the things that I keep telling everyone is that individuals like General Greer bring so much validity to, you know, being the Veterans Capital of the USA, but also to this community. You know, we have all these narratives of what people think we are, that don't take the time to find out who we really are. But someone of this caliber, as General Greer, really puts us on the map and makes us feel good about the gentleman that decided to be here in El Paso, in our community. You know, they've traveled all over the world, they've been at every community that you could think of during his career, and he chose to be here in El Paso. And so that really is, wholeheartedly, I mean, I just feel so good that he made that decision to him and his family and everyone else. So I really thank you for everything that you do for our community, what you've done in service. Thank you. Anyone else would love to hear from, you're very welcome to say a few words, anyone? Yes, please.
I'm Dr. Michael Greer. I'm a retired OB-GYN physician, and my dad is actually 100 years old on March the 8th. So for him to actually be this viable and this integral for messages, mental, physical advice recommendations is pretty stunning. So he loves El Paso, he loves the people, loves the weather, and my mother retired here because my brother was stationed here at Fort Bliss, and it was like home. Once she came here, she says, this is where I want to live forever. So my dad is actually, has a great house with a great view, and so we'll have our final years here. My husband and myself are actually taking care of my dad.
Oh, excellent.
So I'm the official VA caregiver, along with my husband, Steve Bryant. So we're honored to be here, and we're honored that all of you guys came here to honor, you know, my dad, Major General Edward Greer, who's one of the early black generals, you know, in this country, as a role model for, for just actually achievement and grace of God to actually keep him alive for all these wars, and to bring him home, so he could actually be here today to receive this award. We're honored as our family to actually have military background. I'm also a retired major in the Army from the Medical Corps. So the military family, I knew that going in the Army, you're going to get the best training in the entire world as a physician. So going into the Army was just like totally, not even a second thought for actually saying, be the best you can be. My dad taught me that, and I honor my dad today. I appreciate all of you here honoring my father.
Thank you so much, Doctor. We're gonna, yeah, go ahead, Linda.
Good morning, everybody, Commissioners and Judge Samaniego. General Greer, one of my most favorite people, Michael, and Steve's not here today, but you know, this was one of my, I couldn't be happier to let the judge's office know to please, and Commissioner Stout, I didn't know he was, he was also a co-sponsor, but for this resolution, because having a living legend here among us in El Paso, that in 100 years old, I couldn't, it just made my heart really warm, proud, and I just wanted to give thanks to Michael and Steve as hidden heroes on behalf of the Elizabeth Thode Foundation. They are truly hidden heroes, because they are taking care of this amazing legend that we have in our midst. So I just want to say thank you to Michael and Steve as well.
Thank you very much.
Judge, I just, I just wanted to also comment really quickly. I want to thank also Michael and Steve for allowing my office to be involved and help coordinate with the judge's office on this amazing resolution. You know, this is, this is El Paso history. El Paso history is, the history is so important, and it roots us, it provides soil for each generation to grow, and as we've grown, you know, so do we hope for our children and grandchildren, that they have healthy fertile soil, that their yields may surpass ours. And General Greer is one of the most historic figures in this community, and I'm so grateful for the example that he has shown, and I'm grateful for the example that has been shown by his family, Michael and Steve, you know, which is, you know, growing the public knowledge of our shared history through their work, and keeping, and keeping him in our, in our hearts and minds. So thank you all for allowing the county to play a small role in being a keeper of the flame of El Paso's history.
Thank you, Commissioner Stout.
Congratulations. Happy birthday, happy birthday, General.
Carl?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I'll try to keep this short. Happy Veterans Day. This is what we meant when we say Happy Veterans Day, and that El Paso is the Veterans Capital of America, of the United States, right here, the things that is going on today. So I thank you all for that. I stand here before you today as the president of the local chapter of the NAACP, the National Association for the Advancement of Color People, also as a retired Command Sergeant Major from the United States Army. I'm joined by my first vice president, Command Sergeant Major, retired Diane Williams. We thank you for what you're doing. We were here last month, just like Commissioner Stout just says, this is American history. We were here last month to recognize Black history, our African-American history. General Greer is a living testament
Absolutely.
...to African-American history. We stand on the shoulders of the trail that he blazed for soldiers such as us. We just celebrated Executive Order 999981, which was signed by President Truman in 1948, that integrated the United States military. That was five years after General Greer joined the military. So he lived it. So sir, we salute you, we love you, and we wish you happy birthday, and I'd like to give my vice president a chance to say something also.
Thank you, thank you, Carl. Good work.
Thank you. I would also like to say thank you so much. As a retired Command Sergeant Major who came in the Army at the end of the Women's Auxiliary Corps, it was people like General Greer who opened the way for us to become an integral part in the military. And as we begin Women History Month, I would also like to say, if it not been for people like General Greer, women would not have had a chance to be all we could be and have now the opportunity to compete for any position and join any MOS within the Army. So General Greer, I would like to say thank you so much.
First of all, I want to thank God for his mercy, grace, and his blessing. This is a blessing that God has, you want me to stand up? Okay. I'm sorry, there, General. I'm not going anywhere yet, okay? The thing is, the true fact is that God, he anoints leaders, and you're one of them leaders he anointed a long time ago, and you still to the present, with you inspiring your officers. I want to thank your officers here and all who support the Veteran Capital of the USA. Happy birthday. And I want to thank the Commissioners for you acknowledging the history of our general here, and we will continue to do it. You will not be forgotten, ever, not as long as we are part of the Veteran Capital of the USA, and you yourself. Remember, on Saturday, I pinned you with the pin that says Soldier for Life, and we are all soldiers for life, to include your active military. And I want to give everybody, I want to thank you for you inspiring me to continue, when I went to visit you at your home, and you, you know, you opened your arms, you, Steve, Mike, and your sister Gail, when help was needed. So you know, you'll never, I'll never forget you, General. You're my inspiration. God bless you. Happy, happy, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, before we take the picture, I'd like to ask all soldiers and veterans that are here present to join us in a salute to honor Major General Greer's 100th birthday. Group Ten, hut, present, arms. Happy birthday, sir. We love you. Order, arms.
Thank you. A break and going into the lobby, the Commissioners Lobby, we'll be going there to take a break. Thank you.
Pictures there, Phil?
Yes, but we'll start here and then we'll...
Commissioners Court will recess for five minutes.
all soldiers for life, to include your active military. And I want to give everybody... I want to thank you for you inspiring me to continue when I went to visit you at your home, and you opened your arms, you, Steve, Mike, and your sister Gail, when help was needed. So, you know, I'll never forget you, General. You're my inspiration. God bless you. Happy, happy, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, before we take the picture, I'd like to ask all soldiers and veterans that are here present to join us in a salute to honor Major General Greer's 100th birthday.
Grok Tenshut, present, arms. Happy birthday, sir. We love you. Order, arms.
Thank you. A break and going into the lobby, the Commissioners' lobby. We'll be going there to take a break. Thank you.
Pictures there, Phil?
Yes, but we'll start here and then we'll...
Commissioners' Court will recess for five minutes.
Stand by, please.
Yes.
Jessica, go ahead.
Commissioners' Court has recommained to regular open session. We are on item number six, public comment. We do have three speakers sign up for public comment. We first have Mr. Rick Gammon, and just as a reminder, there is a five-minute time limit for public comment.
Welcome, Rick.
Judge Saman Yago, Honorable Commissioners and attendees, good morning. Let me preface these remarks with the knowledge that I don't know of anything in the county that's gone on, so I'm not angry with anybody here, Commissioners' Court or within the county government, but it's something that's a national issue that I think really needs to be looked at. A new year, more public shootings in Texas by persons with mental health issues, and again, politicians, gun control advocates, police leaders, mental health advocates, and the media, they all bemoan the fact that Texas does not have a specified red flag law. But here's the dirty little truth: Texas has something better, and it's been in effect since September 1st, 2013, passed by the 83rd regular session of the Texas Legislature under Senate Bill 1189, signed into law by Governor Rick Perry. It was passed after the August 2012 ambush death of elected Constable Brian Bachman in College Station by a person known by his family to be in crisis and well-armed, who went on to kill an innocent pedestrian, injured a passing motorist, and ended his life while engaged in a shootout with College Station police. who are making an emergency detention of a person who is an imminent threat to themselves or others, the discretionary ability to seize any firearms in the person's possession, then follow Article 18.191 of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure regarding notices and deadlines on potentially returning the seized firearms to the person. No hearing or getting a court order for seizure beforehand, and it can take up to 60 days to return the firearms if the detained person was not court ordered into further inpatient mental health treatment and is otherwise permitted by law to possess weapons. Now, why is it that no one, police agencies, district and county attorneys, mental health authorities and advocates, gun rights and gun control groups, politicians, and most importantly, the media, knows about this? Why is it that no one knows about this, much less uses it? Can it really be gross negligence that no one knows of this provision? Or is there a darker reason for denying it exists and failing to utilize it? If it was properly publicized, families and friends of those in crisis would know that law enforcement has the legal ability to seize firearms from the person in crisis to help prevent an active shooter in a public place like Sunderland Springs, Santa Fe, Uvalde, Lakewood Church, and even the August 3rd, 2019 Walmart shooting, in which the defendant's attorney now claims that Patrick Crucius had a prior diagnosis for schizoaffective disorder and will certainly use that diagnosis as a mitigating factor at trial. I implore this body to ask its elected officials, the county attorney, the sheriff, and the constables, to provide a report to Commissioners Court on four things. Number one, when each office first became aware of the existence of this seizure provision. Number two, when each office first codified this provision in its applicable policies and procedures. Number three, what training each entity has conducted to inform its employees of this provision. And four, how many times the sheriff's office, and the constable's office, and each constable's office, has seized firearms under this provision? All politics aside, this is a critical public safety issue. Innocent lives are still at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker, we have Ms. Elizabeth Crawford.
Welcome, Elizabeth.
Thank you so much. Good morning. Thank you. We're told in God's Word that greater love has no man than this, than that a man lay down his life for his friends. We know from God's Word that this is Christ speaking about His coming crucifixion. I want to speak about that verse also in terms of heroism, in terms of laying down life for the good of others. In 1994, under the Clinton administration, the FACE Act was passed forbidding access to clinic entrances. Under the FACE Act, the, what we would call the old-fashioned rescues, became a felony, where people would stand against the doors of the abortion centers to try to prevent the women from going inside. It was declared a felony at that point. I was a junior in Bible college at that time, and I remember just thinking how normal our lives as Christians were, how we were basically living, living out prosperity, and yet behind the scenes is going on a Holocaust of abortion. Basically, in the Christian world at that time, we were, we were yawning at abortion. The Roman Catholics were out front in many ways in the abortion, in the fight against abortion. Those in my world were basically yawning at abortion. In light of Women's History Month, I want to speak about a young lady that I met. Fast forwarding to 2019, I had the privilege of serving in Jackson, Mississippi, with some beautiful people. I want to speak about a young lady who's only 17 now. She's, she will probably never be in academic history books for Women's History Month, and yet her, she has had such a huge impact. I met her when she was 12 years old. At that time, she had her, just her, not including all her family members, but, but just her herself, I believe, had saved about 12 babies. That was in 2019. She went on to serve outside that abortion center with her family for many years. After that, I can't even imagine how many babies she saved in that time. She was, she's part of a family that would not only rescue the babies, they would refer them to the pro-life center for help if the moms wanted to keep the babies. Those that, the moms wanted to save the baby's life but not keep them, they would adopt them. Her dad is a surgeon. Anna spent time in Ukraine with her dad on, on medical missions trips. I hadn't seen Anna in five years. I got to see her several months ago. Anna's 17 years old now. She is excited as ever about what, what she does. She's a servant. She cares for her younger siblings. She cares for the children that were adopted into her family, and she's finishing high school and planning a career as a midwife. There's a verse in scripture, in Proverbs, that says, "If you forbear to deliver them that are drawn to death, those that are ready to be slain, if you say, 'Behold, we knew it not,' does not he that ponders the heart consider it? And he that keeps your soul, does he not know it? And shall not he render to every man according to his work?" We are aware of the abortion Holocaust going on in our nation, and we're accountable to a holy God for it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Our last speaker we have signed up for today is Mr. Pedro Osera.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Pedro Osera. You know me already, guys. So I'm calling in to give an update. I couldn't make it today. So the update would be that Emergence already gave me my, my exams. Now they're refusing to give me my, my, my results. They don't want to, nobody wants to read out my results to me. And they, they want to wait 30 days, which is incorrect. So there we have them. It takes 24 hours for them to, 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 to give me the results. And now they, they don't want to wait, give them to me. So it's just very tiring. My behalf, I couldn't make it today. I'm at the doctor right now. So I need, guys, I left some, some issues, some, some little bit of work that Mr. Leon needed to do for me. They haven't returned my, my, my information that I needed. Hopefully today they will return it. And I have another issue. I went to the Commissioners Court on Thursday, not this Thursday, last Thursday before this, and I was treated very unfairly. I was harassed by the people there. They also did the same thing that happened in the court. They, they, they told me the instructions how to, that I could stay there, do the public speaking, and I did that. So they asked me to leave for a moment because they had to do the executive meeting. So they, they told me they were going to call me back. I went out there to the waiting area, and René Navarro kept from Emergence. He kept bothering me, telling me I had to leave, that I shouldn't be there, blah, blah, blah. And I told him, no, I'm not going to leave. I'm not going, I told him more than eight times I wasn't going to leave because that was an instruction that were given to me. And he kept bothering me, and I finally told him, the letter that I took to you guys to the court, saying that I'm mentally ill and all that, I showed him the letter. He said, I don't care about that letter. You need to leave. I said, no, I'm not leaving. And I'm just going to do what the CO told me to do, Ms. Christie from Emergence. So I stayed, and, and I had to tell René to, to keep away from me. And so eight, about eight times I told him. And, and then when finally, they asked me in, I was doing the incident report, and I, they told me to sit down. I sat down, and they, let me breathe. I'm not breathing. Okay, and, and so they called me, I spoke to Ms. Christie, and then Ms. Christie told me that, I told her I wanted to do an incident report, and she told me that, no, she wasn't going to take it. That she, she, she had given the orders for me to, for them to tell me to leave. So it's, she's telling me to stay, and then she's telling me to leave. So what's the issue? Do I leave? Do I stay? You know? And then when Asher about the, about the situation, I'm, I'm, I'm not making sense no more, sir. I'm not making sense no more, but I'm, I'm, I'm just telling you what happened. I've been harassed. I need to do an incident report. I need you guys to help me do an incident report on this issue. So I don't know who's going to help me. Commissioner Lilly, Liliana, or Leon, but I need somebody to help me do an incident report because they do not want to do an incident report. They refused to take an incident report, and they were, I felt harassed by them. I told them more than eight times, and that's it. By what, by what the sheriff told me, they told me that I, I can pursue with a criminal, criminal charges on this issue because of, they're supposed to keep away. The first time they tell me, keep away from me. I feel harassed by you. That's it. They, they did not stay away. So that's all I have to say for this meeting, sir. But I'll be walking in during, during the week. I'll go over there tomorrow, probably, try to see what we can do about all this session. Thank you very much. See you next Sunday.
Thank you, Pedro. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you.
That completes all the speaker signed up for public comment.
Thank you.
Item number seven, presentation 7A. Receive a presentation regarding the El Paso County 2024 Cesar Chavez Day of Service Volunteer Project, collecting and distributing socks and ball caps to local farm workers.
Welcome, Cheryl.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners. I'm Cheryl Eisenhower, the county volunteer coordinator, and I'm here today to talk about our upcoming service project. So as you know, beginning last August, I believe, the county volunteer program started hosting monthly days of service, opportunities for members of the community to come together and serve one another, extend the reach of county services, and allow our citizens to participate in great projects. We had a fantastic project in January in honor of Martin Luther King and his legacy, collecting sneakers for asylum seekers. At last count, Migrant Support Services told me we had over 800 shoes that had come in, and they've almost all been distributed to migrants coming through our community. It was a great outpouring of support from the community, and we really appreciate the generosity. This month, March, can't believe March is already here, we have Cesar Chavez Day, which is on the 31st of March. It's a U.S. federal commemorative holiday declared in 2014 to honor the life and legacy of Cesar Chavez. As part of that, we want to recognize his work as an educator, environmentalist, and civil rights advocate, and inspire our community with service initiatives and endeavors to spotlight the vital work of local farm workers and laborers. To do that, we are collecting socks and ball caps that we will distribute to the local farm workers in our area. The bins have been distributed throughout different county facilities, from the far east to the far west and central, northeast. And what we'll do with these socks and ball caps is we will distribute them to our local farm workers on Saturday, April 6th. The idea is that farm workers fill our tables, and we want to take a moment to spotlight what they do and how vital their work is to people in the community and to help provide comfort and protection while they are working in the fields. Volunteers will be engaged in a variety of different ways. They can help, first of all, community members can help with donations. Volunteers will help pick up the donation boxes that are spread throughout the county, and will sort and organize into bundles the socks and ball caps for the distribution. Volunteers will help with the distribution at three different sites. They'll be at Fabian's in the east, Canatillo in the west, and in the central part of El Paso at the Family Youth Services Center. So again, the idea is to encourage acts of service, large and small, to bring El Pasoans together and extend the services provided by the county and increase the spirit of volunteerism. We've got an incredible community that wants to support and help, and by offering these days of service on the weekend, it gives a broader participation for folks who work or in school, and we want to have as many people come out and support this project as possible. The, as I mentioned, the distribution plan will be at the three different sites, Fabian's Community Center, the Family Youth Services Center, and the Canatillo Community Center. Distribution will be one bundle per person while supplies last. We hope to have an abundance of supplies, but we'll, we'll have to wait and see once we collect them. Sock and ball cap donation bins are located here in the courthouse, downtown at the annex, the Family Youth Services Center, the Fabian's Community Center, Aguadulce Community Center, the El Paso County Sports Park, the Sheriff's Department, the Pro Shop at the golf course, at the Canatillo Community Center, at Juvenile Probation Department, and four of our Justice of the Peace offices scattered throughout the community. So we hope that everyone will have a convenient location to drop off those items, and then we will pick them up on Friday, April the 5th, to sort and bundle them for the distribution on the 6th. Volunteers who are interested in supporting this project can register online at EP County Volunteers or email volunteer@epcounty.com, and there's a QR code available as well. We really appreciate the generosity and kindness of the community. We want to support those who help put food on our tables. It's vital work, and it's a commodity that we all benefit from. Questions?
Just want to thank you. I guess because it's like the success you had last time, and then, you know, we're talking about everything, the service of volunteers, but what a, what a way to honor Cesar Chavez, right? Because I always figure we need to keep doing what they wanted us to do, even though they're no longer with us, and, and, you know, just focusing on the farm workers and, and, you know, what he did in every sense of the word. Also, collateral support that was amazing was Dolores Huerta, and I'm sure she would also be very pleased because she was very involved in this. So Cheryl, thank you for like the volunteerism that is so important in these days. I think it, it addresses mental health. You know, they say that when you're helping others, you, you feel better about yourself, and you, you know, you're almost addressing your own mental health challenges by helping others. So, so many touch points, and we thank you for everything that you and your team does. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner.
You know, Cheryl, I want to thank, I think, you know, our, the encouragement now that people have, and then thank you for coordinating the volunteer effort. We find out that, you know, people really are very interested in helping out their community. My daughter shares a birthday with Cesar Chavez, and so she'll be very, very happy to hear about these efforts. She's always in the past, you know, done things on, related to the Cesar Chavez effort, and so I'm, you know, I'm sure she'll participate.
Thank you, Commissioner Goronella.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, any further comments?
Thank you, Judge. So, good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Melissa Carrio. I just really want to echo what you've already said about Cheryl. I've been so fortunate to have her be a part of our team. She hears this from me all the time, but she really works so very hard and always puts the community first in all that she does. She's really taken this brand-new volunteer coordination program that we've never had before, built it into something super amazing. And I know that when the days come where she cannot be in El Paso, Texas anymore, she has set the bar very high, but she's also laid out amazing procedures so that someone can take what she's done and move forward. Super grateful to what she's done for our community, for our employees. We're very thankful for what you do. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Melissa. She hasn't read the little small print that says she can't leave?
I'm trying to make her see that. Yes, sir.
Get down to the bottom of the contract. No, you've just been very special. You and your husband have been such a delight to have and just so encouraging. So thank you both for that. Thank you. And we'll support whatever we need to do from our end to support your initiative. I know each commissioner will, a creative way to, to do that as well.
Yes, please share it far and wide.
Yes.
We like the military that we can just recall her back even though she doesn't want.
Mandatory.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight from Commissioners Court. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve up to $5,000 to utilize for tours of the mission trail to host 50 people for the Border Plex Veteran and Family Caregiver Expo Welcome Reception and Tour on March 12, 2024. Funding is available on SR Tours Promotion Advertising and SR Tours Promotion Mission Trails. Trails.
Well, this is something, you know, Commissioner Olgin and Betsy and I have talked about that how do we, you know, people come in and leave and they come from all over the place and they, they don't spend enough time and then we've got individuals, Linda, you know, Tony, thank you so much for, that, that really need to be able to grab it, to get people to come to El Paso. And we always think, I'll, I'll give you an example, when, when I supported this idea of having the, the marathon, uh, through the Mission Trail, all of these individuals is from all over the world got to see the missions and a lot of them say they, they're coming back. And so I don't think we're gonna, people are just gonna by nature come to a conference. Uh, so what Betsy and I talked about, that this could be sort of like a prototype of, you know, how can we sponsor tours and of course with the coordination from Commissioner Olgin to, to get this traction of, of wanting individuals to, to want to come to the missions before they start their conference. So this was the idea, we're going to do everything possible to sort of, you know, what did we learn? How do we do it better? Uh, so this will be our first, uh, intent to be able to do something like this and we're looking forward, uh, to your support for, for the, the money that is required to be able to, to do this.
Move to approve?
Actually, sorry, sorry, Judge and Commissioners, Anna Schumacher, Assistant County Attorney. Like last week, we, we're still evaluating whether we need an agreement for this item. There's no corresponding agreement attached. So if I could just, if you all would consider an alternate motion to allow us to review whether we are going to need an agreement and then execute that. So the motion would be allocate up to $5,000 for the Borderplex Veteran and Family Caregiver Expo Welcome, subject to a possible corresponding agreement. That's okay. Thank you.
And I'll second it, but I did have a question, um, before. So I know when we had been, uh, discussing this issue previously, we had talked about whether in some situations it would be appropriate to use hot funds. Um, and so I always had that in the back of my mind, but I'm seeing here, is this a new category, this tour promotional advertising? Or is this really the category we should be using when it's this type of event?
So I'll, I'll, I'll chime in and then I'll turn it over to Jess if she has any other comments, but yes, this is a new line item that we created just recently, strictly dedicated for these Mission Trail tours. Okay. There's $100,000 set inside that account so that it could be used specifically for these types of events.
Okay, because I know I had reached out before, um, to see if it was appropriate to use hot funds and everyone agreed that it was, but really we should not do that anymore. We should go with this line item, account number now.
Jessica.
Commissioner. Jessica Garza, Budget and Finance Department. Sorry, got a short cord here. Um, this account is, is utilizing hot funds.
Oh, okay.
It is a hot fund account, but we did set this, uh, account up just for the tours and events taking place like that.
Okay, but so when we place an item on the agenda, it'll be this account?
That account, yes.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number nine from purchasing, we do have a correction from the county attorney's office, approve, approve award recommendation of bid two four dash zero zero seven as needed paving emulsion for the county of El Paso FY 2024 to Quality Emulsions LLC of Mesa, Arizona, for an estimated total cost of $1,848,000. Purchasing approved on February 16, 2024. Funding is available on SR Roden Bridge Road Reservicing, opinion number three seven eight eight.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Davidson, your county purchasing agent, and we're asking for the court's approval for the award recommendation on the as-needed paving emulsion to Quality Emulsions. This was a competitive bid. They were the lowest, most responsible bidder. It is a cost savings this year of 78,000, but the total we're asking to be, uh, approved is an estimated $1,848,000 and it to be awarded to Quality Emulsions. I can answer any questions you might have on this.
Yes, Karen, thank you. Uh, you know, with, with, uh, the businesses that we have here locally, uh, like Job and others, uh, but we go with a, a company out of Mesa, Arizona. My thoughts are they must have a com, an office here. I, I just can't see how it would be, uh, a savings all the way from Mesa, truck all that stuff here to El Paso and still be the low bidder. Uh, I'm having trouble wrapping my arms around that idea.
Ferny, Ferny, you want to respond and then Karen so that we could?
Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners, uh, and Judge, uh, Ferny had on this with Public Works. Uh, just to let you know, Commissioner Leon, uh, this emotion company is the only company that provides, um, I guess, emulsion to the area. Before, we used to have a company out of Albuquerque that would, uh, provide us the material, uh, and then, uh, they, for some reason, um, I guess about three or four years ago, they stopped, uh, providing us the, the service and so that's when, uh, this new, new vendor came in and they did set up a, a shop, um, kind of like a, a distribution center, first day, uh, and that's near, uh, the Santa Teresa area. And so that, that's how they're able to, um, use, uh, be able to, to be able to compete with the, the local vendors is because they do have a local-ish, uh, export office. And so that's how, uh, they're able to provide us these, these services, a lot, a lot cheaper than we used to get from, uh, from the ones from Albuquerque.
Karen?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Ferny, let me ask you this, because I, I don't really understand the emulsion business, but, uh, is it, is this material that's actually mixed here or here in El Paso or other places? And it's, uh, of such, uh, uh, value or, uh, it's so scarce, uh, that it's made elsewhere, trucked over here? Uh, yes, you did mention, uh, that it's got an office here, uh, or, uh, a front door that, that they use as their address, but, uh, I, I just, I still, I'm still very surprised that, uh, they beat out local vendors.
Yes, sir, and, and the product itself is not something that is, uh, produced locally, right? So the, uh, the emulsion is a byproduct of, uh, when they refine the petroleum and the gas. And so, uh, once they start this refinement process, uh, then they, they sort out, uh, the emulsion material that we needed. And then in addition to the, not necessarily the byproduct, but they do add polymer, uh, which is, uh, an additive that, that allows the material to be a lot stickier. And so this is kind of like a, um, uh, a process that's done in a refinery. And the only refinery that we do have locally is, of course, is, uh, uh, the, the, the one here, um, off of, off Delta, but, uh, they don't provide this, this product as far as for they, they sell, right? So these, um, these, uh, refineries that we do buy the material from, the emulsion material, that, that's a secondary process that they go through to be able to, to clean out the, uh, the, the residue and to be able to leave us with the, the polymer and the, uh, the emulsion that we, we utilize. And so there, there's, um, a variety of different polymers that are sold. And so this, the one that we purchased is the one that we have a better track record as far as for being able to work it and it works well with our weather and our, and our street configuration. We have gone out, uh, I guess in the past, um, I think it was the last four years or, or five years, we did go through this exercise where we tried to reach out to different vendors, uh, you know, uh, that would, that could provide the material, uh, to us here locally. Uh, we did reach out to some of the vendors that were, uh, located off of, uh, in Midland and Lubbock, uh, as well as the one that was in Albuquerque and then, uh, uh, what's it called? The, uh, the one from, um, from Arizona, right? And so they were able to provide us, uh, a good recommendation of, um, the type of products that we can use and how we, we compared that with the type of material that we, we currently use. And so that's how we were selecting the, uh, the most qualified vendor. Uh, through the, um, I guess through the years, we have lost some of our competitiveness, right? So now, I, I guess, last year and this year, we've had the sole source of, uh, the, the company out of Albuquerque because they're able to provide the, the cheaper product than, than the one from, um, Albuquerque and the one from, uh, Lubbock.
Okay, thank you, Ferny. Appreciate it.
And I guess the, um, the reason for the questions and, because I think it's obvious, I mean, um, both of you know that the Commissioners Court is very dedicated to local support and making sure that, that we utilize it. And I know Karen knows that as well. So when we see something like this, the explanation really helps out to, to know why. And we'll, we'll always question why someone is coming from, from out of town and, um, but I, I guess your, you know, your response is, is very well taken, so. Uh, Karen, any, any additional things or anything you want to add to this conversation?
No, no, sir. Ferny gave you a great explanation. I, I, unless you have questions in the procurement, I, Ferny's answered most of the questions.
Thank you, Karen.
I'll make a motion to, to approve it and thank you very much, uh, Karen and Ferny for, for that response.
Second?
Thank you.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to the item from purchasing that was pulled from consent.
Okay.
Item four S.
Thank you.
Pulled by Commissioner Leon.
Take advantage, we have Karen.
Approved authorized the award of RFQ two four dash zero zero one investigative services for the county of El Paso Human Resource Department to the highest scoring firm, Ironwood Business Consulting of the Woodlands, Texas. Purchasing approved on February 2nd, 2024. Funds are available in General Fund HR Contract Services General.
Okay, thank you, Judge and Commissioners. The reason I pulled this, again, it's for the same reason, but I, I've got to tell you that, that I know over a dozen, uh, local, and I know Karen, that this is maybe more directed towards you, Melissa. Uh, I, I know at least a dozen investigative companies here in El Paso, they do a great job. Uh, or, or do we need to start moving towards, uh, hiring another FTE for the county attorney's office insofar as investigators or two? Uh, but I just can't see that we go out of town for, uh, consulting of this type of, of work that, I, I take it they're, uh, HR investigations that we need to complete. And, uh, I, I know that we have the talent here in El Paso, but yet we still go out of town.
No, those are excellent points and questions, Commissioners. So, uh, I see Natalia on screen and I want to turn it over to her for some of the more specifics, but in general, over the years, HR has done an excellent job working to make the investigations process as efficient as possible. Over the years, given different movements, different cultural changes in work environments, the number of complaints have risen. And so it, I know when I was in HR, it was very difficult for us to keep up with the number of complaints coming in and making sure that we investigate as promptly as possible. And so Natalia, I'm going to turn it over to you, but Commissioners, we do have multiple providers and this, I believe, is not the only provider who will be conducting investigations. I do believe we have several other contracts with local providers already that are engaging in our investigation process as well. But as investigations are assigned, in order to keep the flow moving, we assign to multiple contractors. So Natalia, I'll turn it over to you if you want to speak specifically to the Woodlands, which is on today's agenda.
Thank you. Welcome, Natalia.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Natalia Chaparro with Human Resources. Thank you, Melissa, and thank you, Commissioner Leon, for that question. We actually currently have five contracted investigators, which are here locally, and we did the RFQ, um, late last year and we received, uh, out of the vendors four, and I believe there was, not all of them were external, but speaking specifically about Ironwood, they do have local individuals that are residing here in El Paso and that provide these services locally. So what I, what I believe is the headquarters is, um, in a different area than El Paso, right? They're headquartered, I believe if it's in Dallas, if I'm not mistaken, Karen.
Houston.
Woodland, Texas.
Woodland, in Woodland, Texas, yes, I'm sorry. But they do, the benefit of it is that they do employ individuals here locally to carry out and to provide those services to, um, to here, to, in El Paso County.
Natalia, thank you.
And we are, um, I do want to add that our offices is working with purchasing to go with an RFQ, uh, a, a second RFQ because we do want to secure as many investigative firms as possible. So we, uh, are wanting to reach out to as many local, right? As you mentioned, Commissioner Leon, local investigators to invite and apply and vie for the RFQ, if you will.
Okay.
Karen, I don't know if I missed anything?
Natalia, again, thank you so much for, for what you're telling us. Uh, Melissa, thank you. Uh, again, the HQ is in Woodlands, uh, which is right outside of Houston. And, uh, what I'd like to do is pull this item, uh, maybe postpone it for a little bit because again, I, I know of our investigators that we have with our, with our county attorney's office, they are great. Uh, maybe they're overwhelmed with, uh, work now, as you mentioned, Melissa, uh, we're having many more complaints, uh, reaching us, that we maybe consider some FTEs that are here with us rather than spending this money going out, uh, outside the county where we have excellent investigators working right, right in our backyard.
Right, I'd be happy, Commissioner, if you'd like to pull that item, I'd be happy to sit with HR and connect with Joanne and her team to see what we think, um, might be an appropriate solution going forward, given the, the rise in complaints.
And I think, Melissa, if you could add, um, to sort of, sometimes we hear, for example, that it's increasing, but we'd like to hear a little bit more about that, you know, like why it's increasing, the complaints and just so you'll know, you have our support or there's anything or any way you want to address, uh, this increase in, in complaints.
Absolutely. I know HR updates their training when they give to employees and give some of this information. Perhaps we can bring it back to you all in a special session.
That'll be real nice. Thank you.
Okay.
So, second?
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners, for, for, uh, listening to this item with me.
And I'll second.
Is that a motion to delete the item?
To postpone?
To postpone for?
Oh, it, what would be easier to delete it and come back?
Natalia, correct me if I'm wrong, I definitely don't want to interfere with whatever you may have going on, but I think it might be easier for us to delete, let the two offices discuss, and then we can definitely place back on the agenda when we're ready and have more information.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion made by Commissioner Leon, second by Judge Samaniego. Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Natalia.
Thank you.
Item number 10 from Auditor, pursuant to the Texas Government Code Title 10, Section 2256.005, approve and adopt the investment policy as of March 4th, 2024. This policy has been reviewed and includes all changes made to the county's investment policy or investment strategies. Opinion number three six eight six.
Thank you. Welcome, Barbara.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, Barbara Parker, County Auditor. This is an annual item that we bring to the court, is the review of our investment policy. This year, we did mostly housekeeping changes on the investment policy. We removed some duplication. Um, we moved some of the functions from our financial reporting division to our treasury division, which is where they belong. And we also added, uh, North Texas Council of Governments as one of the authorized sources of training, and this was on the advice of our investment advisors. If you don't have questions, I would ask for approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope. Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Item number 11, Public Works, receive an update from the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority regarding the Pelicano Widening Project.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning, you. Welcome, Raymond.
Thank you. Uh, listen, I'm, I'm sorry I couldn't be there with you today, but I'm out of town, so, uh, thank you for accommodating me. Um, I'll be very brief today because the majority of the items, uh, related to Pelicano that you all will be discussing, I believe, will be in executive session, but I did want to alert you to a couple of filings that, that have been issued lately, um, and answer any questions that, that I can. Uh, so the, the first item I wanted to touch on was, uh, it relates to the declaratory judgment that the RMA has filed in the bankruptcy, uh, court. As you may recall, that is a, a motion where the RMA is requesting the judge to make a ruling on the default that we issued for, uh, JAR Construction, the contractor on the Pelicano project. So the, as a reminder, the contractor has claimed that it was an improper default. that it was an improper default. We obviously do not believe that is the case, and we have filed a declaratory judgment action seeking the judge's ruling. So we filed that some time ago. The trustee has provided a response back on February 21st. And that response, I believe your attorneys will, will speak to you in more detail in executive session about. But that has been provided. We will provide a response to that, and as soon as we do, we'll share that with your outside attorney, or your attorneys as well. So that was the, the first action I wanted to share with you. Another one relates specifically to the surety. And as you may recall, when I was visiting with you last time, I touched on a demand letter that we sent into the surety back on February 15th. So we, actually, I'm sorry, February 6th, if I remember correctly. So we, we submitted a demand letter to the surety essentially saying that we have filed a claim on the bond and we expect action in response to that bond. So they had now, since then, provided a response to us on February 15th, essentially saying that the bond has not been triggered. That has been provided to your attorneys as well. I, I suspect that there will be some conversation about that in executive session as well. So we're, we're putting together response on that one, and we will provide that to your attorneys as well. So really, those are, those are the main action items over the past month. And I have to answer any questions. Otherwise, I do believe that our attorneys have spoken with yours, and, and you will be briefed in more detail in executive session on these items.
That's correct. Commissioners, any comments at this time?
I just wanted to clarify. I'm sorry, Raymond. For the demand letter to the surety, what was their response? They claimed that the, that there had been no breach, or what was their response?
There, there were three items in there. The main one was that the bond has not yet been triggered. That was their argument in, in this letter.
And what was the basis for that assertion?
You know, I'll, I'll let your attorneys provide that input to you, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Right. Judge and Commissioner?
And I'm happy, incident, I'm, I'm sorry if I spoke over anybody. Incidentally, I'm happy to share these, these are public filings, so I'm happy to share them with you directly and any of the court members as well, of course.
I would like that, please.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Judge?
Commissioner Leon?
Oh, yes. I was just going to make a motion when you're ready, but go ahead first, Commissioner.
Mr. Teas, number one, thank you for taking time and, and talking to, to us about this. And I've got to say that, again, you know, you're in a hard spot. The constituents tell us, we hear this all the time, and it, it seems like we're getting close. And depending on what I hear during executive session, it's the same old stuff. Nothing is done. We talk a lot. We talk, talk real good on legal jumble mumble. But all the filings that you just spoke of a second ago, that are being filed now, why weren't these filed earlier, sooner, to get us to the, to our goal of having that road repaired?
Well, I, I can say, let, let me speak more generally. I, I can again tell you that the RMA has, has been doing everything that we felt was appropriate to pursue this project. We've also, along the way, made numerous offers to the, to the county, to the county attorneys. If there are alternatives that we are not pursuing that you think are ripe, we would be happy to take those, take those steps. But we're, I, I think the, the real answer, Commissioner, is that these, these steps, whether it's the default, the, the bankruptcy, all of these steps require defined, they have defined procedures, right? So within the bankruptcy, you can't do X before you do Y, all of that sort of thing. So I think, you know, I think that's really the, the real answer, Commissioners, that all of these things require prior steps, and we're, we're taking those steps as, as we're supposed to.
And, and I guess a, a lot of these thoughts come to me in 2013, when we had a, a company that was building the sports park, couldn't continue. So we had to go to our, to our guarantor and make them act. And it was a lot quicker than we're doing in Pelicano. So I guess I'm just trying to, to make a comparison that we, we were able to do the sports park quickly as compared to Pelicano that's dragging on and on and on. And in the, cut in the middle is not really you or me. It's the, our constituents that have to put up with that traffic on a daily basis. So, but thank you for, for being here, being virtual with us every week, knowing what you know that, what's coming from, from me especially. And I appreciate your patience.
Yes, sir. I, I will, I will make note. I, you know, I don't know the details of the sports park. I'd, I'd love to hear if you all have one of your attorneys you could send my way to let me know the, the specifics of that one. And again, if we're, if you all took action that we're not taking in this case for some reason, I'd love to hear what that action was and if, if we could take advantage of that as well. I mean, I don't know if there was a bankruptcy involved in the sports park. I don't know if you had a contractor that was fighting the default like, like we have in our case. There are a lot of unique actions within this that I suspect were not included in the sports park. But again, I, I don't really know. But I, I'd be happy to hear that, that situation to see if there's anything we can pull from that to, to expedite this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, Commissioner Coronado?
Thank you, Judge. Raymond, when, when can do you expect either a decision or a hearing on the declaratory judgment action that was, that y'all filed?
You know, unfortunately, I still don't have a date for that. I've asked our attorneys to put, to put together a timeline, and as soon as I have that, I can share that with you all. But ultimately, it really is at the judge's discretion, as I understand it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Raymond, as Commissioner Leon said, thank you for taking the time, even if it's virtual, but you're here with us, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you all. So because this item isn't posted in executive, and we would like to provide you some updates, we would just request a motion to move number 11 into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to receive information regarding the county's legal rights and responsibilities regarding the Pelicano Widening Project. Thank you.
Second?
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. And before we go into executive session, we'd like to go to the items that were pulled from consent.
Sure.
Item 4I, pulled by Commissioner Leon. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the construction contract between Horizon Construction 1 LTD, in El Paso County, for the construction of the Bradley and Desert Willow Storm Water Retention Pond Project located in the Montana area. Funding in the amount of $1,776,038 is available in CPTN 22 Bradley Pond Construction, contract number 2023-0937.
And Jessica, I think you can read 4O also, because it's basically the same reasoning that I've got.
Yes. Item 4O, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the interlocal agreement between the County of El Paso and El Paso Water Utilities, EP Water, for construction of first-time wastewater systems in the turf estates area. Funding is available in SG G Dig Deep 23 Operating Expense, contract number 2024-0102.
Thank you. Judge, Commissioners, the reason I pulled these two is when we vote on our budgets, and, and I pulled them for the same reason that Commissioner Coronado spoke about those items earlier, is that we take some hard votes. And the public's, a lot of time, the public doesn't realize that these things are moving. And we take those hard votes on our budget to make these things available, these kind of services. There's a lot of people in our county that don't have water. They have to truck it in. And with these types of grants that we're asking from, from the feds and our own participation, those are those hard votes that we take to be able to provide people that don't have the services inside the, the city that are living outside the county. And I appreciate Fernie being here again. And this is really just to highlight these items before the media gets bored and leaves. I wanted to make sure that we did this before we took lunch break. So Munzer and Fernie, I'll let you speak on it, but I'm very proud of what the county is doing in these, in this direction that we're moving.
We'll go to Fernie and then Munzer.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Fernie, I'm on this with Public Works again. Like Commissioner Leon was saying, this project is to construct a retention pond located out there off of Desert Willow and Bradley itself. Basically, we do have this, this major project that is to, to capture the majority of that runoff that comes off the Waco's out there. And so in order to prevent any type of flooding in these areas. This has been one of the projects that were initiated in the 2020, excuse me, funding for stormwater ponds. And so now it's, we, we've actually gone out to bid, and we have our, our vendor, and we're looking to kick off construction here pretty shortly.
Thank you. Munzer?
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Leon, this is one of, I guess, the forgotten areas in the county. It's the donut hole, one of the last donut holes we have without proper service or wastewater service. And we're fortunate enough, we got some grant from Dig Deep, almost $1.7 million toward this project. And El Paso Water Board agreed to fund the second half of this project. And this interloper agreement will allow us to move forward with bidding out the project, which we anticipate to be bid out on April 9th at El Paso Water Utilities. And hopefully, 90 days from then, after we receive the, the bids, we can move forward with retaining a contractor to start constructing first-time wastewater to that area. And this year, we're very fortunate, the county's very fortunate. We already have three projects that start construction, and the fourth is coming hopefully within the next 30, 30 to 60 days. And this one will follow it. And we're also having a major project on the west side that's going to start construction as well, I believe, in June or toward the, toward the end of the summer of this year. So we're moving forward.
Yeah, we certainly are, Munzer. And thank you for reminding me about our partnerships with Dig Deep and El Paso Water to make this a reality for our, our residents out there. And as you mentioned, that we're looking at the, the extreme west side also and coming online. So these are exciting times. And matter of fact, with Dig Deep, we're also talking to them about the Waco Tanks area, which is, I mean, it's almost, it is all, all the way out to the county line. So Fernie and Munzer, I mean, two of the hardest working people I know of on our county. So I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for recognizing these two gentlemen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioner, for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Fernie and Munzer.
Have a wonderful day and week.
Thank you, sir.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay.
And item 4K, pulled by Commissioner Stout. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the construction contract between Vertix Contractors LLC and El Paso County for the construction of the FY23 Countywide Sidewalk Repair Project located throughout the county. Funding in the amount of $300,000 is available in CP Replace 23 Sidewalks Renovation, contract number 2023-0953.
Commissioner Stout?
Thanks, Judge. The reason, the reason I pulled the item is because I, I just wanted to see if I could be provided a list of the, the projects and, and which precincts there are. And I, I know it says that there will be projects in all four precincts, but I was curious as to what, what, what the proposed projects are in my precinct.
Yes, sir. Once again, Fernie, I'm on this with Public Works, Judge and Commissioners. Commissioner, I will go ahead and provide you that list. We had not finalized it yet until we had secured the, the, the cost from the contractor. But now that we have it accepted and finalized, then we'll go ahead and provide that list to, to you and your office and, and all the other offices as well.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll go ahead and move to approve the items.
Second?
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Fernie.
Thank you.
This now brings us to item 12, Executive Session. Commissioners, court will recess into executive session to discuss items 12A through 12D and item number 11, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Commissioners, court will reconvene to take official action.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
The El Paso County Election Department wants you to know how quick and easy it is to vote. Our elections are safer and more secure than ever. After being checked in, you will receive an activation card. Now, all you have to remember is that you're done in four and you're out the door. First, insert the activation card into the voting machine. Second, make your selections using the touchscreen or audio tactile keypad. Third, print and review your choices. If you see a mistake or you change your mind about a choice, tell an election worker. You can correct your ballot up to two more times so that it is exactly the way you want it. Step number four, your vote is officially cast when you insert your reviewed ballot into the ballot scanner. When the screen displays the American flag, that indicates your ballot was scanned and your vote has been counted. Remember that voters in El Paso County are eligible to vote at any polling location during their early voting period or on Election Day. For more information or to find your closest polling location, please visit epcountenvotes.com. If a voter is physically unable to enter the polling place without assistance or likelihood of injury to his or her health, they may ask that an election worker bring a voting machine during the early voting period or on Election Day to the entrance of the polling place and cast their vote from their vehicle. If you are a voter requesting curbside voting, look for the curbside voting sign, park in front of the sign, and you may call or text the number displayed on the sign to request assistance.
Hello. How are you?
As required by Texas law, you will be allowed the same voting experience and privacy when casting your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you for voting, ma'am.
For more information, visit epcountenvotes.com.
Want to talk a little bit about the history of Anthony. And it became incorporated, an incorporated town back in 1881. This is when the Atchison, Topeka, and Santa Fe Railway was extended to that point. Anthony, New Mexico, of course, that is in Doña Anna County and borders the Texas side of Anthony, that is to our north. They often are considered the twin cities, though Anthony, New Mexico became incorporated back on July 1st of 2010 as a city. As of the 2020 United States Census, there were 3,671 people residing here.
Wow, so it's literally been a city for 13 years. Wow, that is incredible. I didn't know that. And I feel like every other town that we've been to, one of the best things that you'll see are the farms, the pecan farms.
That's right.
And I feel like Anthony is no exception. As a matter of fact, our reporter Tony Davis took a look at one of those farms. Check it out.
Anthony is known for its pecan farms and C&amp;J Farms is just one of the many in this area. I was able to speak with owner Shannon Singh, who says, "Being a family-owned business makes all the hard work worth it." Purchased by his grandfather in 1935, Shannon Singh's family started C&amp;J Farms. The farm grows crops like pecans, cotton, and alfalfa that are sold all around the country. After studying general studies at UTEP for two years, Singh felt like it was his time to take reins of the farm and has not looked back since.
I saw my dad getting older and I said, "I need to stay and help him." That's the reason to help my dad out, and then I just fell in love with it. You're out here, you're your own boss and you watch things grow.
Not only has this farm been a part for many generations, but has become a crucial staple to the community.
It provides jobs, that's probably one of the biggest things. We have a pecan house where we shell our own pecans and we provide that service to other people.
As a farm that will soon be celebrating 90 years in the Anthony community, Singh does have plans for its future. They include hoping to pass the torch to his children so that the farm can stay a part of the family.
Yes, hopefully. My son, Shannon Singh Jr., right now he's doing some other profession, but hopefully when he retires, he'll come up here and help me.
Singh says that he plans on increasing his pecan crops over the next few years so that he could continue to provide more for this area.
The Honorable Robert J. Galván County Law Library is a public legal research facility that county residents can use in order to facilitate access to legal information and enhance the administration of justice. As part of the county's Domestic Relations Office and El Paso County Private Bar Association, the Law Library's access to justice commitment is made through an availability of extensive collection of legal resources, access to technology, and availability of important legal forms and other resources. With a connection to the past, delivering present services and envisioning the future, the Law Library is a unique county resource.
Knowledge and information is power. Everyone has the right to arm themselves with information, accurate, current, freely accessible information, which you will find here.
Established in 1950, the Law Library grew from the Texas's 8th District Court of Appeals collection of case law and practice materials. The 8th Court of Appeals, which is located next to the Law Library on the 12th floor of the Enrique Moreno El Paso County Courthouse, still shares custody of the collection and continues to update several resources. The Law Library was named after Law Library Committee Chairman Judge Robert J. Galván in 2004. The Law Library ensures that our legal practitioners can provide exceptional representation to their clients and is a resource for all county citizens to access justice.
But self-representation became something to where people actually couldn't afford an attorney. And it gave them an opportunity to go and look up things for the benefit of their case. And I'm talking anywhere from municipal court tickets, speeding tickets, JP tickets, landlord tenant issues, to cases that were in our county courts and district courts.
We have built our collection and curate the resources so that they can be successful in accomplishing what they need to do within the court system.
The two-floor library facility has a comprehensive collection of print and electronic resources covering federal, regional, state, and local jurisdictions, conference rooms to accommodate attorneys and their clients, or for meeting space. There are computers with webcam capabilities and private study rooms. Printing copying services are available to the public for a fee. There is also technology on hand to scan and fax documents.
This is an access to justice initiative. This is so imperative to those many hundreds of thousands who live in El Paso, because without that, without their ability to have access to information, access to books, access to computers, access to be able to use the justice system, they're left out in the cold.
The Law Library is a great location to access important legal resources to include published cases, forms, court rules, practice guides, plus historical legal books not available digitally, while guided by experienced staff.
We're open, we have computers that you can use, we have printers.
Law Library staff performs outreach in order to help ensure the most vulnerable in our community is aware of the services offered. The Law Library staff is also key in providing the public in-person information on the history of the county courthouse by providing guided tours to the public.
You can see she's not blindfolded, and throughout history, there have been times where she was blindfolded.
The Law Library is open from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM weekdays. For more information, call 915-546-2245, or email eplawlibrary@epcounty.com.
You will find the library to be a welcoming and judgment-free place where you will be met with dignity, respect, and discretion.
The Robert J. Galván County Law Library is committed to facilitate access to legal information for the citizens of El Paso County.
We were talking a lot about pecans and being prevalent here in the borderland, but also something here specific to Anthony and another type of cultivation that we see a lot in Anthony, Texas, as well as Anthony, New Mexico, are grapevines.
Yeah, that's right. And so Anthony has one of the most amazing wineries, especially in the Southwest. And so I feel that Anthony has this place called Sombra Antigua Winery. It is top-notch. So I hear, I haven't been, I want to make it out there, but let's learn about, more about it. Check it out.
Anthony's been interesting because it's been growing and emerging. When we moved here first, it was a non-incorporated city. The vineyard you see here is actually the oldest commercial vineyard in New Mexico. Of course, New Mexico has a really long and incredible history in wine. Our most popular is a Sweet Red.
So these two in particular, I grabbed because one of them is our most popular Dry Red. It's not the driest that we have, but it is a grape that is very, very known to this part in particular. It's almost 300 years old.
We do an awful lot of events, weddings.
So we usually try to have a new musician every single weekend so that we kind of change it up as often as possible.
We're seeing a lot of food locations coming in we didn't have before. I mean, we're funny up here because we can go out and celebrate that we have a Whataburger now.
This area's gotten much more lively with all the businesses in the area, especially our own. We have become well-known for not only our wine, but some of the musicians that we have.
We have an awful lot of return customers, like return every week. And so it's, we enjoy it, we love it up here.
Luckily for us, we've had enough customers that we've relaxed them to the point where they're comfortable drinking wine. However, they like it so long as they're having a good experience, they know they're doing it correctly. Highway 28 has come to be known by the locals as a wine trail. We get a lot of customers who will either start here or end here just because of how easygoing it is.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate!
So, we started a project in honor of the Martin Luther King National Day of Service. This is the 30th year of the MLK Day of Service, and our project is Sneakers for Asylum Seekers. So we've asked our community members to donate gently worn sneakers or new sneakers so that we can distribute to those who are seeking asylum and coming through our community.
You know, these individuals, when they come to us, a lot of them have nothing but, you know, just the hope of being here after having traveled for literally hundreds and maybe thousands of miles. And now with this program that we have, the Sneakers for Asylum Seekers, I think just to make sure I get this correct, we've had about 673 pairs donated. And so, you know, this is just, that part of this program, it really just echoes the commitment that our community has and how united we are to make sure that we keep with those principles of social justice and fairness that Martin Luther King Jr. championed when he was around.
We appreciate you coming out today and sharing your time.
This is an incredible community. So, so much warmth. The Sun City is a true moniker, not just in terms of the sunshine in the sky, but the warmth in people's hearts.
not just in terms of the sunshine in the sky, but the warmth in people's hearts. So we really appreciate everyone's willingness to support this project, this Day of Service, and thank you.
We started clearing and grubbing, taking out any excess material and trash and debris that was preparing all the right-of-way for this project.
So we're going to be extending John Hayes so that it connects on the south from Pelicano up here to the north at Montwood. So it's about a three-mile stretch of land that is going to be connecting this really fast-growing part of the county.
This project will take about 30 to 45 employees on a daily basis. And we're going to install a brand-new water line. We're going to be building ponds, retention ponds. And then after that, the concrete crews, the asphalt crews, and the dirt crews will all be considered, you know, coming in and following through because this is going to be considered a major highway.
We've been planning this project for many, many years, but of course, transportation projects, it is a lengthy process. They have to go through a design and environmental phase, and then of course, funding. Finding funding is always a challenge.
Fortunately, on this project, we were able to secure the funding through the El Paso Metropolitan Planning Organization where they are paying 80% of the project cost and the county responsible for the other 20% of the project.
One, two, three.
This project is anticipating to last 24 months. Actually, it will be completed next year on fall 2025.
The only thing that it's going to do is going to relieve any congestion that may be accumulating throughout Zaragoza and Pelicano right now. Yeah, it'll be worth the wait.
This is just one of many projects that the county is working on right now here on this part of the county. So we have a lot of projects that we're very excited that are going to be coming into our transportation grid in the very near future.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it. You'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history. It has culture. You can learn. You can relax. And you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My God, I'm heading back. Welcome, everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
We established here in Anthony two years ago, but we had our food truck about four years ago. Now we have a full inside capacity. We have a full bar. So we've been going every year. I get people from Horizon, from Favens, from Las Cruces. It makes me feel special. One thing about barbecue, when I leave out of town, we do go out of our way. So every barbecue joint is going to be a destination. So you do have to travel. We usually have our smokers outside. We don't cut the meat into orders. So you'll see me walking around back and forward. As soon as they order, we cut your meats just to try to get that quality. Yeah, we do have a big support from both communities. We always provide jobs. Most of my kids are either from Gaston or Anthony. I graduated here at Gaston, so I'm an alumni. My wife was a Wildcat. So this is our community. We've been here, are alive. So we both grew up here. I get here as early as 5:30 in the morning, and I leave probably 9:00 p.m. So you'll always see me here. I want to make sure you guys get the quality, that expectation. Now we guys keep coming back and bringing more friends, you know? And I see that all the time. I see people come, and they bring someone else, and then that someone else brings someone else. So that's what's making us grow all the time. A lot of people tell me, you know, there's just a little gem in there. And I believe that we're that little gem here in this small town. As you can see, we always advertise Anthony. I'm really proudful. For me, barbecue, being the first and last barbecue stop in Texas, that's really huge. We're in exit zero. So that's something really big for me. That's one of our quotes.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
The El Paso County Election Department wants you to know how quick and easy it is to vote. Our elections are safer and more secure than ever. After being checked in, you will receive an activation card. Now all you have to remember is that you're done in four and you're out the door. First, insert the activation card into the voting machine. Second, make your selections using the touchscreen or audio tactile keypad. Third, print and review your choices. If you see a mistake or you change your mind about a choice, tell an election worker. You can correct your ballot up to two more times so that it is exactly the way you want it. Step number four, your vote is officially cast when you insert your reviewed ballot into the ballot scanner. When the screen displays the American flag, that indicates your ballot was scanned and your vote has been counted. Remember that voters in El Paso County are eligible to vote at any polling location during their early voting period or on election day. For more information or to find your closest polling location, please visit epcountyvotes.com. If a voter is physically unable to enter the polling place without assistance or likelihood of injury to his or her health, they may ask that an election worker bring a voting machine during the early voting period or on election day to the entrance of the polling place and cast their vote from their vehicle. If you are a voter requesting curbside voting, look for the curbside voting sign, park in front of the sign, and you may call or text the number displayed on the sign to request assistance.
Hello.
How are you?
As required by Texas law, you will be allowed the same voting experience and privacy when casting your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you for voting, ma'am.
For more information, visit epcountyvotes.com.
Want to talk a little bit about the history of Anthony. And it became incorporated, an incorporated town, back in 1881. This is when the Atchison, Topeka, and Santa Fe Railway was extended to that point. Anthony, New Mexico, of course, that is in Doña Anna County and borders the Texas side of Anthony. That is to our north. They often are considered the twin cities, though Anthony, New Mexico became incorporated back on July 1st of 2010 as a city. As of the 2020 United States Census, there were 3,671 people residing here.
Wow. So it's literally been a city for 13 years. Wow, that is incredible. I didn't know that. And I feel like every other town that we've been to, one of the best things that you'll see are the farms, the pecan farms.
That's right.
And I feel like Anthony is no exception. As a matter of fact, our reporter Tony Davis took a look at one of those farms. Check it out.
Anthony is known for its pecan farms, and C&amp;J Farms is just one of the many in this area. I was able to speak with owner Shannon Singh, who says being a family-owned business makes all the hard work worth it. Purchased by his grandfather in 1935, Shannon Singh's family started C&amp;J Farms. The farm grows crops like pecans, cotton, and alfalfa that are sold all around the country. After studying general studies at UTEP for two years, Singh felt like it was his time to take reins of the farm and has not looked back since.
I saw my dad getting older, and I said, I need to stand help him. That's the reason to help my dad out. And then I just fell in love with it. You're out here, you're your own boss, and you watch things grow.
Not only has this farm been a part for many generations, but has become a crucial staple to the community.
It provides jobs. That's probably one of the biggest things. We have a pecan house where we shell our own pecans, and we provide that service to other people.
As a farm that will soon be celebrating 90 years in the Anthony community, Singh does have plans for its future. They include hoping to pass the torch to his children so that the farm can stay a part of the family.
Yes, hopefully. My son, Shannon Singh Jr., right now, he's doing some other profession, but hopefully when he retires, he'll come up here and help me.
Singh says that he plans on increasing his pecan crops over the next few years so that he could continue to provide more for this area.
The Honorable Robert J. Galván County Law Library is a public legal research facility that county residents can use in order to facilitate access to legal information and enhance the administration of justice. As part of the county's domestic relations office and El Paso County Private Bar Association, the Law Library's access to justice commitment is made through an availability of extensive collection of legal resources, access to technology, and availability of important legal forms and other resources. With a connection to the past, delivering present services and envisioning the future, the Law Library is a unique county resource.
Knowledge and information is power. Everyone has the right to arm themselves with information, accurate, current, freely accessible information, which you will find here.
Established in 1950, the Law Library grew from the Texas's Eighth District Court of Appeals collection of case law and practice materials. The Eighth Court of Appeals, which is located next to the Law Library on the 12th floor of the Enrique Moreno El Paso County Courthouse, still shares custody of the collection and continues to update several resources. The Law Library was named after Law Library Committee Chairman Judge Robert J. Galván in 2004. The Law Library ensures that our legal practitioners can provide exceptional representation to their clients and is a resource for all county citizens to access justice.
But self-representation became something to where people actually couldn't afford an attorney. And it gave them an opportunity to go and look up things for the benefit of their case. And I'm talking anywhere from municipal court tickets, speeding tickets, JP tickets, landlord tenant issues, to cases that were in our county courts and district courts.
We have built our collection and curate the resources so that they can be successful in accomplishing what they need to do within the court system.
The two-floor library facility has a comprehensive collection of print and electronic resources covering federal, regional, state, and local jurisdictions, conference rooms to accommodate attorneys and their clients, or for meeting space. There are computers with webcam capabilities and private study rooms. Printing, copying services are available to the public for a fee. There is also technology on hand to scan and fax documents.
This is an access to justice initiative. This is so imperative to those many hundreds of thousands.
This is so imperative to those many hundreds of thousands who live in El Paso. Because without that, without their ability to have access to information, access to books, access to computers, access to be able to use the justice system, they're left out in the cold.
The Law Library is a great location to access important legal resources to include published cases, forms, court rules, practice guides, plus historical legal books not available digitally, while guided by experienced staff.
We're open. We have computers that you can use, we have printers.
Law Library staff performs outreach in order to help ensure the most vulnerable in our community is aware of the services offered. The Law Library staff is also key in providing the public in-person information on the history of the county courthouse by providing guided tours to the public.
You've a seizure of blindfolded and throughout history, there have been times where blindfolded...
The Law Library is open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. weekdays. For more information, call 915-546-2245, or email eplawlibrary@epcounty.com.
You will find the library to be a welcoming and judgment-free place where you will be met with dignity, respect, and discretion.
The Robert J. Galván County Law Library is committed to facilitate access to legal information for the citizens of El Paso County.
We were talking a lot about pecans and being prevalent here in the borderland, but also something here specific to Anthony and another type of cultivation that we see a lot in Anthony, Texas, as well as Anthony, New Mexico, are grapevines.
Yeah, that's right. And so Anthony has one of the most amazing wineries, especially in the southwest. And so I feel that Anthony has this place called Sombra Anthony Grow Winery. It is top-notch. So I hear, I haven't been, I want to make it out there, but let's learn about, more about it. Check it out.
Anthony's been interesting because it's been growing and emerging. When we moved here first, it was a non-incorporated city. The vineyard you see here is actually the oldest commercial vineyard in New Mexico. Of course, New Mexico has a really long and incredible history in wine. Our most popular is a sweet red.
So these two in particular, I grabbed because one of them is our most popular dry red. It's not the driest that we have, but it is a grape that is very, very known to this part in particular. It's almost 300 years old.
We do an awful lot of events, weddings.
So we usually try to have a new musician every single weekend so that we kind of change it up as often as possible.
We're seeing a lot of food locations coming in we didn't have before. I mean, we're funny up here because we can go out and celebrate that we have a Whataburger now.
This area has gotten much more lively with all the businesses in the area, especially our own. We have become well-known for not only our wine, but some of the musicians that we have.
We have an awful lot of return customers, like return every week. And so it's, we enjoy it. We love it up here.
Luckily for us, we've had enough customers that we've relaxed them to the point where they're comfortable drinking wine. However, they like it so long as they're having a good experience, they know they're doing it correctly. Highway 28 has come to be known by the locals as a wine trail. We get a lot of customers who will either start here or end here just because of how easygoing it is.
Literally hundreds and maybe thousands of miles. And now with this program that we have, the Sneakers for Asylum Seekers, I think just to make sure I get this correct, we've had about 673 pairs donated. And so, you know, this is just, that part of this program, it really just echoes the commitment that our community has and how united we are to make sure that we keep with those principles of social justice and fairness that Martin Luther King Jr. championed when he was around.
We appreciate you coming out today and sharing your time.
This is an incredible community. So so much warmth. The Sun City is a true moniker, not just in terms of the sunshine in the sky, but the warmth in people's hearts. So we really appreciate everyone's willingness to support this project, this day of service, and thank you.
We started clearing and grubbing, taking out any excess material and trash and debris that was preparing all the right-of-way for this project.
So we're going to be extending John Hayes so that it connects on the south from Pelicano up here to the north at Montwood. So it's about three mile, a three-mile stretch of land that is going to be connecting this really fast-growing part of the county.
This project will take about 30 to 45 employees on a daily basis. Then we're going to install brand-new water line. We're going to be building ponds, retention ponds. And then after that, the concrete crew crews, the asphalt crews, and the dirt crews will all be considered, you know, coming in and following through. Because this is going to be considered a major highway.
We've been planning this project for many, many years, but of course, transportation projects, it is a lengthy process. They have to go through a design and environmental phase, and then of course, funding, finding funding is always a challenge.
Fortunately, in this project, we were able to secure the funding through the El Paso Metropolitan Planning Organization, where they are paying 80% of the project cost and the county is responsible for the over 20% of the project.
One, two, three.
This project is anticipated to last 24 months. Actually, it will be completed next year on fall 2025.
The only thing that it's going to do is going to relieve any congestion that may be accumulating throughout Zaragoza and Pelicano right now. Yeah, it'll be worth the wait.
This is just one of many projects that the county is working on right now, here on this part of the county. So we have a lot of projects that we're very excited that are going to be coming into our transportation grid in the very near future.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons, a wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it. You'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My God, I'm heading back. Welcome, everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
We started, we established here in Anthony two years ago, but we had our food truck about four years ago. Now we have a full inside capacity. We have a full bar. So we've been growing every year. I get people from Horizon, from Favens, from Las Cruces. It makes me feel special. One thing about barbecue, when I leave out of town, we do go out of our way. So it is, every barbecue joint is going to be a destination, so you do have to travel. We usually have our smokers outside. We don't cut the meat into its order, so you'll see me walking around back and forward. As soon as they order, we cut your meats just to try to get that quality. Yeah, we do have a big support from both communities. We always provide jobs. Most of my kids are either from Gaston or Anthony. I graduated here at Gaston, so I'm an alumni. My wife was a Wildcat, so this is our community. We've been here, are alive, so we both grew up here. I get here at five, as early as 5:30 in the morning, and I leave probably 9:00 p.m. So you'll always see me here. I want to make sure you guys get the quality, that expectation, that we guys keep coming back and bringing more friends. You know, and I see that all the time. I see people come and they bring someone else, and then that someone else brings someone else. So that's what's making us grow all the time. A lot of people tell me, you know, there's just a little gym in there, and I believe that we're that little gym here in the small town. As you can see, we always advertise Anthony. I'm really proudful. For me, barbecue, being the first and last barbecue stop in Texas, that's really huge. We're in exit zero, so that's something really big for me. That's one of our quotes.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children. So, remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son eligibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos. Visite ephealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
The El Paso County Election Department wants you to know how quick and easy it is to vote. Our elections are safer and more secure than ever. After being checked in, you will receive an activation card. Now, all you have to remember is that you're done in four and you're out the door. First, insert the activation card into the voting machine. Second, make your selections using the touchscreen or audio tactile keypad. Third, print and review your choices. If you see a mistake or you change your mind about a choice, tell an election worker. You can correct your ballot up to two more times so that it is exactly the way you want it. Step number four, your vote is officially cast when you insert your reviewed ballot into the ballot scanner. When the screen displays the American flag, that indicates your ballot was scanned and your vote has been counted. Remember that voters in El Paso County are eligible to vote at any polling location during their early voting period or on election day. For more information or to find your closest polling location, please visit epcountyvotes.com. If a voter is physically unable to enter the polling place without assistance or likelihood of injury to his or her health, they may ask that an election worker bring a voting machine during the early voting period or on election day to the entrance of the polling place and cast their vote from their vehicle. If you are a voter requesting curbside voting, look for the curbside voting sign, park in front of the sign, and you may call or text the number displayed on the sign to request assistance.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
As required by Texas law, you will be allowed the same voting experience and privacy when casting your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you for voting, ma'am.
For more information, visit epcountyvotes.com.
Want to talk a little bit about the history of Anthony. And it became incorporated, an incorporated town, back in 1881. This is when the Atchison, Topeka, and Santa Fe Railway was extended to that point. Anthony, New Mexico, of course, that is in Doña Anna County and borders the Texas side of Anthony, that is to our north. They often are considered the Twin Cities, though Anthony, New Mexico, became incorporated back on July 1st of 2010 as a city. As of the 2020 United States Census, there were 3,671 people residing here.
Wow, so it's literally been a city for 13 years. Wow, that is incredible. I didn't know that. And I feel like every other town that we've been to, one of the best things that you'll see are the farms, the pecan farms.
That's right.
And I feel like Anthony is no exception. As a matter of fact, our reporter, Tony Davis, took a look at one of those farms. Check it out.
Anthony is known for its pecan farms, and C&amp;J Farms is just one of the many in this area. I was able to speak with owner Shannon Singh, who says being a family-owned business makes all the hard work worth it. Purchased by his grandfather in 1935, Shannon Singh's family started C&amp;J Farms. The farm grows crops like pecans, cotton, and alfalfa that are sold all around the country. After studying general studies at UTEP for two years, Singh felt like it was his time to take reins of the farm and has not looked back since.
I saw my dad getting older, and I said, I need to stay and help him. That's the reason to help my dad out. And then I just fell in love with it. You're out here, you're your own boss, and you watch things grow.
Not only has this farm been a part for many generations, but has become a crucial staple to the community.
It provides jobs. That's probably one of the biggest things. We have a pecan house where we shell our own pecans, and we provide that service to other people.
As a farm that will soon be celebrating 90 years in the Anthony community, Singh does have plans for its future. They include hoping to pass the torch to his children so that the farm can stay a part of the family.
Yes, hopefully. My son, Shannon Singh Jr., right now, he's doing some other profession. But hopefully, when he retires, he'll come up here and help me.
Singh says that he plans on increasing his pecan crops over the next few years so that he could continue to provide more for this area.
The Honorable Robert J. Galvan County Law Library is a public legal research facility that county residents can use in order to facilitate access to legal information and enhance the administration of justice. As part of the county's Domestic Relations Office and El Paso County Private Bar Association, the Law Library's access to justice commitment is made through an availability of extensive collection of legal resources, access to technology, and availability of important legal forms and other resources. With a connection to the past, delivering present services and envisioning the future, the Law Library is a unique county resource.
Knowledge and information is power. Everyone has the right to arm themselves with information, accurate, current, freely accessible information, which you will find here.
Established in 1950, the Law Library grew from the Texas's Eighth District Court of Appeals collection of case law and practice materials. The Eighth Court of Appeals, which is located next to the Law Library on the 12th floor of the Enrique Moreno El Paso County Courthouse, still shares custody of the collection and continues to update several resources. The Law Library was named after Law Library Committee Chairman, Judge Robert J. Galvan, in 2004. The Law Library ensures that our legal practitioners can provide exceptional representation to their clients and is a resource for all county citizens to access justice.
But self-representation became something to where people actually couldn't afford an attorney. And it gave them an opportunity to go and look up things for the benefit of their case. And I'm talking anywhere from municipal court tickets, speeding tickets, JP tickets, landlord tenant issues, to cases that were in our county courts and district courts.
We have built our collection and curate the resources so that they can be successful in accomplishing what they need to do within the court system.
The two-floor library facility has a comprehensive collection of print and electronic resources covering federal, regional, state, and local jurisdictions, conference rooms to accommodate attorneys and their clients, or for meeting space. There are computers with webcam capabilities and private study rooms. Printing copying services are available to the public for a fee. There is also technology on hand to scan and fax documents.
This is an access to justice initiative. This is so imperative to those many hundreds of thousands who live in El Paso because without that, without their ability to have access to information, access to books, access to computers, access to be able to use the justice system, they're left out in the cold.
The Law Library is a great location to access important legal resources to include published cases, forms, court rules, practice guides, plus historical legal books not available digitally, while guided by experienced staff.
We're open. We have computers that you can use. We have printers.
Law Library staff performs outreach in order to help ensure the most vulnerable in our community is aware of the services offered. The Law Library staff is also key in providing the public in-person information on the history of the county courthouse by providing guided tours to the public.
You can see she's not blindfolded. And throughout history, there have been times where she was blindfolded.
The Law Library is open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. weekdays. For more information, call 915-546-2245 or email eplawlibrary@epcounty.com.
You will find the library to be a welcoming and judgment-free place where you will be met with dignity, respect, and discretion.
The Robert J. Galvan County Law Library is committed to facilitate access to legal information for the citizens of El Paso County.
We were talking a lot about pecans and being prevalent here in the borderland, but also something here specific to Anthony and another type of cultivation that we see a lot in Anthony, Texas, as well as Anthony, New Mexico, are grapevines.
Yeah, that's right. And so, Anthony has one of the most amazing wineries, especially in the Southwest. And so, I feel that Anthony has this place called Sombra Antigua Winery. It is top-notch. So, I hear. I haven't been. I want to make it out there. But let's learn about, more about it. Check it out.
Anthony's been interesting because it's been growing and emerging. When we moved here first, it was a non-incorporated city. The vineyard you see here is actually the oldest commercial vineyard in New Mexico. Of course, New Mexico has a really long and incredible history in wine. Our most popular is a sweet red.
So, these two in particular, I grabbed because one of them is our most popular dry red. It's not the driest that we have, but it is a grape that is very, very known to this part in particular. It's almost 300 years old.
We do an awful lot of events, weddings.
So, we usually try to have a new musician every single weekend so that we kind of change it up as often as possible.
We're seeing a lot of food locations coming in we didn't have before. I mean, we're funny up here because we can go out and celebrate that we have a Whataburger now.
This area has gotten much more lively with all the businesses in the area, especially our own. We have become well-known for not only our wine, but some of the musicians that we have.
We have an awful lot of return customers, like return every week. And so, it's, we enjoy it. We love it up here.
Luckily for us, we've had enough customers that we've relaxed them to the point where they're comfortable drinking wine. However, they like it so long as they're having a good experience. They know they're doing it correctly. Highway 28 has come to be known by the locals as a wine trail. We get a lot of customers who will either start here or end here just because of how easygoing it is.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I am current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children. So, remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate.
Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de las vacunas rutinas, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son eligibles para la vacuna de COVID-19.
La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos. Visite ephealth.com.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos. Así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
So we started a project in honor of the Martin Luther King National Day of Service. This is the 30th year of the MLK Day of Service, and our project is sneakers for asylum seekers. So we've asked our community members to donate gently worn sneakers or new sneakers so that we can distribute to those who are seeking asylum and coming through our community.
You know, these individuals, when they come to us, a lot of them have nothing but, you know, just the hope of being here after having traveled for literally hundreds and maybe thousands of miles. And now with this program that we have, the Sneakers for Asylum Seekers, I think just to make sure I get this correct, we've had about 673 pairs donated. And so, you know, this is just, that part of this program, it really just echoes the commitment that our community has and how united we are to make sure that we keep with those principles of social justice and fairness that Martin Luther King Jr. championed when he was around.
We appreciate you coming out today and sharing your time.
This is an incredible community, so much warmth. The Sun City is a true moniker, not just in terms of the sunshine in the sky, but the warmth in people's hearts. So we really appreciate everyone's willingness to support this project, this Day of Service, and thank you.
We started clearing and grubing, taking out any excess material and trash and debris that was preparing all the right-of-way for this project.
So we're going to be extending John Hayes so that it connects on the south from Pelicano up here to the north at Montwood. So it's about three mile, a three-mile stretch of land that is going to be connecting this really fast-growing part of the county.
This project will take about 30 to 45 employees on a daily basis. And we're going to install brand-new waterline. We're going to be building ponds, retention ponds, and then after that, the concrete crews, the asphalt crews, and the dirt crews will all be considered, you know, coming in and following through, because this is going to be considered a major highway.
We've been planning this project for many, many years, but of course, transportation projects, it is a lengthy process. They have to go through a design and environmental phase, and then of course, funding, finding funding is always a challenge.
Fortunately on this project, we were able to secure the funding through the El Paso Metropolitan Planning Organization, where they are paying 80% of the project cost, and the county is responsible for the other 20% of the project.
One, two, three.
This project is anticipating to last 24 months. Actually, it will be completed next year on Fall 2025.
The only thing that it's going to do is going to relieve any congestion that may be accumulating throughout Sarahosa and Pelicano right now. Yeah, it'll be worth the wait.
This is just one of many projects that the county is working on right now, here on this part of the county. So we have a lot of projects that we're very excited that are going to be coming into our transportation grid in the very near future.
Visit the Mission Trail for many reasons. A wealth of history, culture, and arts. You'll be able to taste it. You'll be able to hear it. You'll be able to see it, you'll be able to dance to it.
To know us is to love us. You're going to meet people as if they're your friends. If you come here to the Mission Trail, you're going to get a really deep sense of the unity that we have because of this connection that we all have.
I think the Mission Trail has something for everyone. It has history, it has culture, you can learn, you can relax, and you can connect. It just kind of fills your soul.
You definitely want to see everything that we have to offer.
It's just something that you have to see and experience for yourself.
We have something very special going on here, and it's just starting.
The people here are very welcoming. We welcome you to the historic Mission Trail.
My go, I'm heading, but welcome everyone.
It's time to come down and check us out.
We started, we established here in Anthony two years ago, but we had our food truck about four years ago. Now we have a full inside capacity, we have a full bar, so we've been going every year. I get people from Horizon, from Favens, from Las Cruces. Makes me feel special. One thing about barbecue, when I leave out of town, we do go out of our way, so it is every barbecue joint is going to be a destination, so you do have to travel. We usually have our smokers outside. We don't cut the meat into its order, so you'll see me walking around back and forward. As soon as they order, we cut your meats just to try to get that quality. Yeah, we do have a big support from both communities. We always provide jobs. Most of my kids are either from Gaston or Anthony. I graduated here at Gaston, so I'm an alumni. My wife was a Wildcat, so this is our community. We've been here, are alive, so we both grew up here. I get here as early as 5:30 in the morning and I leave probably 9:00 PM. So you always see me here, I want to make sure you guys get the quality, that expectation, that we guys keep coming back and bringing more friends, you know, and I see that all the time. I see people come and then they bring someone else, and then that someone else brings someone else, so that's what's making us grow all the time. A lot of people tell me, you know, there's this little gem in there, and I believe that we're that little gem here in this small town. As you can see, we always advertise Anthony, I'm really proud of. For me, barbecue, being the first and last barbecue stop in Texas, that's really huge. We're an exit zero, so that's something really big for me, that's one of our quotes.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-
We're not on yet, are we?
Not yet.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jessica.
Commissioners, Court has reconvened to regular open session. Item number 13 postponed February 26, 2024. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding pursuit of the county's digital advertising opportunities.
Anna Schumacher, Assistant County Attorney. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for hearing me today, and I'm requesting no action at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the final item on the agenda, item number 11, receive an update from the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority regarding the Pelicano widening project. And I believe we have no action for this item as well.
Okay.
This concludes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Well, thank you, our translators, everybody. It was short and sweet, thanks to General.
Thank you.
What an amazing resolution, so thank you.
Okay, this concludes today's meeting at 1:23 PM.
Thank you, take care.